Good evening, everyone. Thanks to Planning Board members for attending. We have a quorum. We're all here. And thanks to the public who are joining us this evening and the applicants. So I'd like to call the meeting of Monday, November 1st, 2021 of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. The first order of business is the confirmation or modification of the posted meeting agenda. We are going to add a few things to the correspondence and announcements, including a discussion of the 2022 calendar. So I'll just let you know that in advance, but other than that, I know of nothing that is changing in the proposed meeting agenda. Is that correct, Jim and Gretchen?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm assuming everyone has received Jim's meeting notes. That being said, could I have a motion to accept them as submitted?
So moved Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Second?
Second Cathy.
Second Cathy, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? And carries, thank you. You've received the October 18 minutes in draft form. So everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions? I'm hearing none. Could I have a motion to accept the October 18 minutes as submitted?
So moved to least.
Thanks to Lisa. Second Edna, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. I'm gonna, Jim is going to put up the proposed 2022 calendar. You recall that following some discussion among Planning Board members, we are proposing that the meetings start at 6 o'clock instead of 6:30. That will then push back our public hearings from 6:45 to 6:15. Gretchen, is there anything you'd like to add or share with us about this calendar?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. The only change is the second December meeting, which normally doesn't fall on a Tuesday. But that Monday is Hanukkah, so even though town hall's open, we figured it would be best to do it on Tuesday, though, for any public hearings and things.
And we are looking, because we're at two meetings a month now, we don't have that we used to have between June and July, correct?
Right. Everything's just first and third.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Board or any comments? Is this still, this proposal that has us moving back acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion to accept the calendar as it's been proposed.
So moved.
Moved Cathy, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Um. Gretchen, I think it would be helpful if we got this as soon as possible up on the town website.
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to Joan tomorrow and John.
And maybe we really need to kind of boldly emphasize the change in meeting. Give people a couple of months to get accustomed to it.
Okay.
Okay, we have two, I guess we'll call them referrals we've received from adjacent towns, one from Red Hook and one from Hyde Park. And I'll ask Jim to let you know what these are about.
Sure, Melody. So really quickly, we got some information from Town of Red Hook that they are undertaking their LWRP, which is Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. You know, Town of Rhinebeck has one. We use it regularly. Just letting us know that it is going on. There is a survey online and asked us if we're interested to just take a look at what they're doing. See if you have any comments or questions, feel free to fill out the survey if you so desire. And you can find all the information about that right on their homepage. So if you go to the town's homepage, it's right there toward the top of the page. And then the, the second item of information, we just want to let everyone know is we did receive a referral from the Town of Hyde Park. They are apparently amending their rural event venue standards and making some revisions to the code. They sent us their version of what the proposal is. It didn't show the changes, so I will take a quick look through the proposal versus their existing code to see if I can identify kind of the highlights of what's going on. I'll send that out to all Planning Board members. Just kind of as an FYI, if you want to take a look at that, sort of, you know, my summary and or the code, let me know if you have any questions or comments you think you might want to forward on. If you do, I can probably do that informally, you know, as your planner, just send those on to the town. If not, we'll just kind of let it go. I don't think it needs a, they're not, they're not adding any uses. They're just modifying what already exists. So let me know if you have any comments. We can pass those along. Otherwise, I think that takes care of that item.
Any questions for Jim? Okay. So this evening, we have no new applications before us, which gives us a little bit of time before we open the first public hearing. So I'd suggest, Jim, that we go to the referral from the Zoning Board of Appeals on McLeod, which is at the end of our agenda.
Absolutely.
You want to walk us through that, please?
I can do that. So I'm sure as everyone remembers, we saw an application from Justin McLeod for significant redevelopment of the parcel. They're proposing to rehab a lot of historic structures on the site. Kind of do as, as the applicant or the comprehensive reimagining of the site with the renovation of existing historic structures, the principal structure, and then they're also going to construct a pool and some other site improvements on the property. Originally, there were some proposals to move the structure, the historic structures around. That proposal has since changed now, and the historic structures are going to stay where they are. The two variances that are being requested of the ZBA, we have discussed in the past. And so they were sent back to us, obviously, for a referral. First one is converting the main barn into a detached accessory dwelling. The proposal is for a total of 1,874 habitable square feet on two floors, which exceeds the zoning code limit of 900 square feet. And then the second is for total aggregate of the proposed mostly existing accessory structures. I think they are proposing one additional shed on the site. But the total aggregate of the accessory structures would be 2,912 square feet in the RC5 zone. The maximum permitted is 1,500 square feet. So what I've done for you for tonight was to draft referral response, which of course we can amend if you, as you see fit, if needed. Essentially stating that we find the variances do not raise significant planning or environmental concerns and recommend that the ZBA rely upon their own study of the facts to decide the application. Obviously, leave it up to Planning Board members to discuss and see if you want to change that recommendation at all.
And if my memory serves me correctly, this is the last piece for us prior to moving ahead to look at approval of the application. Is that correct?
I believe so. I see Darren is online here. We, we did receive, I did receive a copy of a letter from Dave Paulson from the county stating that he was okay with everything on the site. So that was one thing we were waiting on, which has been resolved. So yeah, I believe this is pretty much the last piece, other than any other questions the board might have about the application itself that's before you.
Darren is on, so Darren, is that your understanding?
It is, yes. So we did get the septic approval just the end of last week, and I believe these are the only two open items, both with the ZBA at this point, unless the board has anything when we get to the public hearing in a few minutes.
Okay. Fellow Planning Board members, do you have any comments or questions about this referral?
I think they're fully justified, given that they enable McLeod's to maintain the buildings on site in their current location and actually preserve this little, this farmstead. I think they're definitely a worthy variance to give to permit them to do that, which they're willing to do.
So do you want to alter Jim's referral response at all? He's just basically saying we're referring it to the ZBA to make their own opinion, but you seem to be suggesting.
I think that we should encourage them, my own opinion, to grant these variances. Without them, they're not going to be able to do the preservation that, you know, we've worked hard on with them to permit them to do, which they're, you know, which delightfully they're willing to do. I think that we need to make that clear to the ZBA that we feel that these variances are fully, fully justified.
And, and not just a matter of their review, but something that we support?
Absolutely.
All right. Are there other comments from other members of the Planning Board?
I agree with Michael. I think a slightly stronger support, Jim, would be appropriate in this instance, given everything that has been done by the applicant.
Well, I, I agree. This is something that helps to preserve the buildings. So I think, I think the compromise being made here is, is certainly warranted, and we should be calling it out as something that's so Jim, how to, how would you recommend playing with this a little bit to express that sentiment?
Yes, I had actually drafted a sentence like that. I wish I'd left it in now, but I didn't want to presume what the board was going to write beyond our standard responses. I think I would write something to the effect of the Planning Board encourages and supports the granting of the variances. We'll have to change the word, to encourage and enable preservation of the site and the structures. Something to that effect.
Excellent. Do we need to, Melody, do we need to vote on this or?
We, we, we do, we do. I just want to make sure that everybody else on the board who wishes to make a comment has the chance to do so. So take that as agreement that we should bulk this up a little bit in support of the, rather than just our sort of neutral. I, I think I agree that this warrants a more positive affirmation.
Sounds good to me.
I agree.
So we'll, we'll trust Jim to incorporate that sentiment into it. And with that being said, can I have a motion to accept the edited draft referral response?
So moved.
Second.
I think Joe, was that you or Sean?
It's Michael.
It was Michael. Okay, Michael. And second by Edna, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have a couple of minutes before our first public hearing. Is there anything anybody on the Planning Board would like to bring before the whole board? Otherwise, we sit in silence for at least two minutes, which isn't bad considering.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Emma.
I, I have something that I have been wanting to talk about, and that is ground mounted solar. I have seen a couple of applications that are very attractive. And I actually got in touch with the Solar Industry Association. I hope to ask them for examples. They don't answer their phone, so I shall have to send them an email. But going on a little trip to look at gardens around the area one day, there was one particular installation where you walked out of the house, the back door, to a lovely walk through a garden. And on the other side, either side of the walkway were three small ground mounted solar panels interspersed with beautiful plantings. And I remember walking out of that house and not thinking, oh, great, you know, they're, they're doing something with, with solar. I thought, this is gorgeous. I would like to have this. The other thing that I have seen is the use of pole mounted solar. When solar panels are on a pole that, such that they can revolve and follow the sun, they are about 45% more efficient than, than stationary ground mounted. And I have seen one application where three of these were in a row in an orchard. You know, the orchards typically come in rows, and they were one of the rows, and it was just very, very attractive. It looked like it belonged there. So anyway, I hope to come up with more examples so that people can find, you know, more attractive ways to do this.
Thank you, Edna. And I also know the town board's been doing some active work on solar installations as well. I think Jim's been working with them, so all of this is coming together nicely. So thank you. I think we're now at 6:45 and at a point where we can open the first public hearing of this evening. That is Martin Saznov, 703 River Road to Construction House. And who is here representing the Saznovs?
That's me, Josh Payne.
Hi, Josh. How are you?
Good. How is everybody?
Good, thank you.
Good.
So Josh, is there anything you want to update us on, or do you want to give us a quick overview of? I think we've seen it for a couple of months, and some of us have done the site visit, so I think we're ready, but why don't you just give us a quick view?
Yeah, so the, the project objective is to build a pool house near, near Martin and Tony Saznov's existing pool. Yeah, I mean, the, the design of the building is pretty agricultural in nature. It resembles a barn and kind of matches the detailing of the existing buildings on site. We had conversations about the possibility of a kitchenette in the, in the structure, but that was going to be viewed as a residential structure. So we've removed the kitchen from the design. Additionally, we're, we're tying the septic for the building, because there will be two bathrooms still. So those are going to tie into the existing septic system, and we have identified the, the reserve field location, which was requested during the last meeting. And that, that's per Tekonic Engineering's previously approved plans, which were done a few years back when they renovated their, their barn. We are still waiting on that approval from the county. As everybody knows, they're, they're pretty backed up, but we've been in touch with them, and we expect to have that resolved in the next few weeks.
So what approval are we waiting on, Josh?
The, the septic approval.
Okay.
Septic approval to do what?
To, to tie, to tie the waistline from this building into the existing septic system. So we'll have, we'll have a tank outside of the building, which will be fed to a pump chamber, and that, that pump is going to go into the existing system.
Okay. Jim, I'll turn it over to you for your comments. I mean, I wasn't aware that we didn't have DOH, so we'll have to talk about that, but Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I wasn't either, though. I did note that we needed to ensure we had approval from, from DOH on this. Really, I think we've addressed the primary, you know, item that I had identified before about it being considered an accessory residential unit. Now, the kitchen has been removed. It is noted as such on the plans that we see here in front of us with the, the note in the middle of the screen here. The only thing that I was hoping for, Josh, was that the, the internal schematics that you had provided us previously would be updated to show that that kitchen had been removed for submission of the plans. I didn't see that in the, the updated submission here. So if that hasn't been done, just to have that, that sheet that shows the inside resubmitted without the kitchen in it.
That, that was submitted a couple of weeks ago to Gretchen. We, we provided one hard copy and a digital copy as well.
Okay, I must have missed that. So if that's been submitted, then, then Melody, I guess that takes care of my, my comment there. It's the only thing would be Department of Health.
Okay, um, comments from other members of the Planning Board, questions?
Do you want to review the site visit?
Sure. I was getting to that.
Okay.
All right, you go right ahead.
Kathy, Melody and I walked out from the residence to the site. It's a lovely site. It is completely protected from view from any neighbor. You're surrounded by trees and fields. The, the only concern expressed on site is that the site for the accessory building does slope a bit toward a small hill. And that suggests that some care will be needed during excavation for the slab to make sure that, you know, a rainstorm is not going to wash a bunch of soil down that hill. I think that was really the only concern expressed.
Okay. Questions, comments from other Planning Board members? All right. This is a public hearing, so Jim, are there, is there anyone in the waiting room looking to speak to this application? Doesn't sound like it.
Nope, not seeing anyone, Melody. I'm just searching through the screens here.
Okay, so I guess the question before us is, prior to learning tonight that we didn't have DOH approval, I thought we were ready to close the public hearing and vote, but I, I would open this up for discussion about how we want to proceed. We oftentimes hold up closing the public hearing and voting until we know we've got DOH approval. So I'd like to entertain some discussion about how we want to go forward.
Well, I would just like to ask the applicant how this issue of not washing soil down the hill is going to be dealt with.
Well, that'll, that'll be dealt with, and it will be shown on the, the, the site plan for construction. We'll have silt fencing on the downhill side of, of the project site.
Very good.
Pretty typical detail.
Given that, Melody, my own thought would be to approve, you know, with the condition that Board of Health approval is given.
Other opinions from Planning Board members?
Agree. That seemed a reasonable way to proceed.
Anyone else?
If, if that's all that's required, then once it's, once you, once it's acquired, you'd be free to stamp and sign, which could be next week or the week after, rather than waiting for a month.
Josh, they giving you any indication of when you might hear from them?
Yeah, it, next week, the initial review is supposed to be completed, and then we're told it's going to be another two weeks or so after that.
Okay.
So, you know, it should be by, yeah, second to third week of, of the month.
Okay.
So Mel, I guess the, just, just from my perspective, and I guess the, the question, you know, to consider, you know, a, a conditional approval or not, is that if we do a conditional approval and the county came back and had an issue with what was proposed, and we closed the public hearing, Josh, you'd kind of have to start all over again and come back in and re-advertise and all that kind of stuff, because the public hearing would be closed.
I, I think, I think Jim, your point is valid, and it's going to come up again in a few minutes, so.
Right.
You to really make that clear, so everyone understands what the problem would be.
Right, so, so if we close it and the board were to vote, you know, on approve it today, conditional upon, you know, County Health approval, then if there was an issue and you had to change something on the plans, you, you'd probably have to come back in before the Planning Board, re-advertise, start all over again. So if you're looking at three weeks out, you think before you're going to get County Health approval, and you might be back in before the board in four. I mean, you know, again, it's up to you and the board, but I just want to make sure you're aware of, you know, what might happen if, if the, you know, County Health Department has an issue and we do an approval tonight, so.
Okay, so what is, what is the process moving forward with the Planning Board if we decide to hold off then?
We, we just reschedule you. We continue the hearing.
For another, oh, you continue the public hearing. Okay, so that would be open ended.
It would continue, no, we can continue the public hearing to essentially a month from now, which would be the first meeting in December. And I think Jim's point is, you're saying possibly three weeks out before you hear from the Health Department, and it's a decision between you want to take the chance with the Health Department for a week or so, or, you know, understanding that if they have a problem and we've closed the public hearing, you're back at square one.
I understand. Okay. And this is a decision that needs to be made tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's a decision whether or not you want the board to look at potentially considering approval, or if you want to, you know, reschedule or continue the public hearing, I should say, until December 6th, which would be maybe a week or a week and a half or whatever, after you think you're going to get, you know, appro, you know, approval.
Right. I, I think we should consider approval now. I, I don't, I just don't foresee any issues based on my conversations with the county.
Okay. Yeah, just want to make sure you're aware of, you know, just the potential that's.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Uh, everybody okay with that? Does everybody follow where we're going with this?
If, if he feels comfortable, I certainly, I'm comfortable. I, I won't have to be the one starting over.
I, I don't blame him. So Jim, your resolution will change slightly, is that right? The draft approval? Correct? Oh, don't jump ahead.
Yes. Sorry. Yep, no, I'm trying to pull up the resolution right now, just on the last one here. So yeah, so this, this approval resolution would actually change so that the bolds you see here under 4B, where I was asking for that interior plan that apparently has been submitted, that would actually come off and will actually just change that to say that it requires approval from County Health, County Department of Health.
Okay. Do you want to just skim over it for us? I, I think it's all here. These have been posted. We are not required to read them. And I really don't have any intention of reading them. Basically, what we're doing is approving this conditional upon approval by the Department of Health.
Correct.
Any, any questions? I would entertain, accept the draft approval resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second, Edna.
Cathy, seconded by Edna. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
But we have to close. We have to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Let me make a motion to close the public hearing. Let me back up. Sorry about that.
So moved.
Second.
Michael and Edna. All right, so let's go back to the motion to accept the draft approval resolution as amended.
We have to, we have to vote on closing the public hearing.
Okay, all right, vote. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions. Sorry about that, folks. Now to the draft approval resolution.
We need another motion?
Apparently I do.
Then I saw move.
All right, a second. Michael. On whoever. All right, let me poll the board. All those in favor, uh, Delise?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Edna?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I vote I. Is that the last? Have I got everybody or did I miss somebody? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck. Next up, Justin McLeod, 531 Old Wurtemberg Road, renovations, relocating, renovating small buildings, solar array installation, site plan review and special use permit. Darren?
Yeah, so Darren from the Art of Building here on behalf of Justin and Kate McLeod to talk about 531 Old Wurtemberg Road. And actually, the description of what we're proposing has changed a bit since that agenda item was written, I think, some time ago. So there's no longer proposed a solar array, and we're no longer proposing to relocate any buildings. But what we are talking about is still a re- reimagining of the site, as was mentioned earlier, taking some former agricultural buildings and giving them some fresh use for more of a modern lifestyle. And adding in a couple of small things, such as a tool shed, a pool, a vegetable garden, and some significant landscaping, basically landscaping designed to create some more buffer around the site and to restore some of the landscape features that existed during the period of significance, which is between 1800 and 1900, this being a very historic site, both in terms of its structures, its landscaping, and the proximity of the buildings to one another. And I think the most developments since last time are that we've been to the Zoning Board of Appeals, who was almost complete, and we're processing the two variances that were mentioned earlier that we received a referral for. And we have received Board of Health approval for our septic system. So those were, when we left the last meeting, what I believe to be the two open contingencies. So, those were, uh, when we left the last meeting, what I believe to be the two open contingencies and, uh, just the ZBA being open at this point.
Okay, um, Jim, anything you want to add at this point?
No, Melody, I think, uh, from a planning perspective, I think we're, we're in good shape. Again, the question will be, um, you know, how we move forward, knowing there's a ZBA, uh, request out there, uh, but we do have approval from the county health department, which is a, a big checkbox to check off, so that was a good one.
So we have no site, this, okay, we have no site visit reports because that was done quite some time ago. Um, I believe we're pretty much in the same situation that we were in with the previous applicant. Darren, in terms of understanding that there's still an approval outstanding on this project, and, uh, I, I would say from a planning board perspective, I think that you've checked all the boxes and I think we're, um, more than satisfied with the work that's been done to bring this up to a, a standard that we're very happy, happy with. Um, I would open it up to other comments from the planning board, but I think then we need to, um, have the same conversation we had with the Saznov application about how you wish to proceed tonight, so I'd open it up to the planning board now for comments. Uh, Jim, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment?
Take a look.
Not seeing anyone, Melanie.
All right, I think that brings us back to the previous conversation. Darren, um, I think you understand that if we were to go ahead and vote, um, to close the public hearing and approve this tonight, you're in the same position that the Saznov application was. Should for any reason the zoning board of appeals deny your application, um, you know you would be back at square one.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think the, especially this time of year, the extra weeks that we might gain by closing it out tonight would be pretty beneficial for racing winter, and, um, you know, we're hopeful, given the fact that we're dealing with existing structures here, uh, that we have a pretty good, strong case with the ZBA, so I think that's a, a risk we're willing to take.
I, I would hope that the fact that we sort of, um, beefed up our referral back to them with some positive affirmation will help as well. Anyone else from the planning wishes to comment on the route we're proposing? Okay, um, so at this point, I think if no one objects, we're at the position of making a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second?
Second, Kathy.
Motion by Michael, second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, okay, Jim, we have a, I believe we have a draft approval resolution.
We do, uh, I have it up on the screen, um, pretty standard resolution. Again, type 2 action, uh, special use permit site plan, um, for this one, um, because it is part of what's written in the code, I did add in, uh, that the site plan approval, uh, is specifically approving construction of the tool and pool equipment shed, uh, as it is, uh, over the maximum permitted three roofed accessory structures on the site. Um, that's a planning board role, just want to make sure that it's clear in the application that that is part of what's explicitly being permitted here by the planning board, and then, of course, I'll have to add in, um, a new C and then C will become D, to essentially state that, um, it's a subject to ZBA approval of the two variances, as we've discussed earlier.
Okay, everybody clear?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to accept the draft approval resolution as amended?
So moved.
Sean.
So moved, Sean, second?
Edna.
Second, Edna, I'll poll the board. Joe?
Aye.
Elise?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, Jim, and I think I, for the entire board, when we, um, express our appreciation for all the hard work you put on, put into this project and bringing it to a really, what I think is a fine, uh, conclusion.
Much appreciated, and I appreciate.
Thanks, thanks to you and thanks to your applicant.
Thank you.
Um, next up is Scott Lyons, uh, 6961 Route 9 Minor Subdivision. We were contacted, I believe, today by Marie, uh, who confirmed that they will not be presenting tonight, Marie Welch, and is asking to continue the, uh, public hearing until December 6th at 6:45. Do I have that right, Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to December 6th, 6:45.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy and Edna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no abstentions, I assume. Thank you, the motion carries. Uh, next up, the application of Thomas Daniels, 8 Slate Dock Road, improvements to the property.
Okay, good evening, uh, planning board, thank you, Melody. Uh, Robert Murray. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure. Uh, Robert Murray, I am representing Tom and Donna Daniels. Uh, we're continuing our, uh, public hearing, uh, presenting the removal of an existing house, a 1945 house, and uh, the construction of a new house. Uh, we've submitted plans to the planning board and our application does in fact require uh, two variants, one for an area use, uh, we're, we're proposing to build a structure that's, um, almost 3,000 square feet and the zoning code allows us, uh, 2,300, and secondly, we're, we have a non-conforming, uh, building in our front yard, we're putting a garage in the front yard. Um, so, let's see, this evening, I'd love to first suggest we don't expect to close the public hearing. In fact, I want to, um, the owners might like to speak, but I'd like to run through just an update for you.
Actually, Richard, or Robert, I'm sorry, um, we didn't receive any additional information from you until 2 o'clock today, is that correct?
I, actually, I had hoped and expected, as a Zoom call, I would share the rendering that you requested, Melody, so if.
Well, we didn't, we didn't receive it in advance, right?
It's just, okay, I've never been notified in writing to provide it, actually. So I've done it, I've done it, I wasn't aware that I had to provide my presentation piece, but that's okay, if you'd like me not to show it, that's fine, it's fine, I will report on what it is. Uh, the public might enjoy seeing the rendering, it's simple, the neighbors are aware of it, so we've done our homework.
But, well, the problem, the problem is that we do ask people to send new information to the planning board. Uh, our requirement, which is listed in our agendas and other things, is two weeks.
Right.
Believe.
I was, as we went back to in-person meetings, I thought I would enjoy putting a chart up or showing people in public in person, so my mistake, we don't need the rendering, that's fine.
Well, we haven't, being as we only received additional information today, we haven't even had a chance to circulate it to the board.
It's okay, no, it's, it's not necessary for us to look at it.
Okay, so.
Give you my report anyway.
Um, that's the question, the question is to, pardon me?
No, go ahead, please let me know your concerns.
Well, the concerns are that we like to have the, anything that you're presenting in advance, so that our planning consultant and planning board members can review it before the meeting.
So we've already submitted plans and an application that have.
So you have nothing, so your presentation tonight would add nothing new, or it would?
Well, it's an update, but if you don't want to hear it, that's all right.
It, Robert, it's not really a question of not wanting to, it's a question of giving you the best hearing we can, and without having seen it, we have no idea what you're talking about. And, and so it's really important for the board to have, as Melody points out, um, adequate time to consider what is being submitted, what is being updated, what is being added to, so that we can be thoughtful in our responses and questions to you.
Right, so we've already submitted what I consider to be a full package. I don't need the rendering.
Package, does the full package include the two things we previously asked for?
No one asked me for anything.
No, no, I ask you specifically for a rendering of the garage from the neighbor's yard, and we ask you two meetings ago for engineering information about blasting. Are those items included in the package?
So what, what was asked for, what, when I did ask for clarity on what you wanted, I was given a link, the video, which actually, no one asked me anything in the last planning board meeting. It was only me suggesting or asking what I might provide, asking for clarification, but we've done it, and, and we, I'm sure what we're going to conclude here is that we need to wait till the next planning board and we'll present it at that time.
Robert, hi. Sorry, I'm sorry for the echo. If, if I can speak, hi, I'm Donna Daniels. Um, apologies, we thought this was submitted, um, we do not have yet, although we had requested the archaeological study and the survey, we requested them, uh, two days after, so those reports aren't done. My thought would be if it's okay with the committee, since we were going to have to come back with those, um, and again, we do want the planning board to know, we have been working on this since the day we walked out, it was just very difficult to get somebody to come, the surveys have been done, the reports just aren't complete, so perhaps, um, we'll take the committee's direction, but it, it may make sense to just push this to the next meeting, um, so that we can make sure that you have everything you need in, in advance, and everybody feels like they're informed, because I think as Robert was going to say, even if we looked at what we had already today, we unfortunately, you know, despite best efforts, weren't able to get the reports complete to present to you tonight.
Okay.
But I, I might like to, what I really wanted to do, not only to just give you an update on survey, archaeological, and, and response to you.
Did they hear me?
Lastly, I wanted to maybe ask a question to the planning board, and that is, um, is it possible, will we close the public hearing if we can resolve planning board issues, accepting the variance itself?
No.
That was just done in the last application.
But their application was complete, except for one, yours is not.
There is.
Robert, we're trying to do the best we can for you and for your client, and, um, the application just is not complete and is missing critical elements. I'm sure Gretchen could be of help to you as you expand on it, but you have a ways to go before this could be closed.
Robert, can you also clarify, have you submitted anything to the ZBA yet for the variances? My understanding is it hasn't gone to the ZBA yet.
So, number three on my list of updating you is that, yes, we've submitted to the ZBA, went in today, on time.
So the ZBA is likely two months away.
Well, we'll be at the November 16th hearing.
Yeah, but they always then go, they never make a decision, so you're two months out with the ZBA.
It would most likely be January with ZBA.
Thank you, Gret.
They have to do acceptance, and then they have to do public hearing, and then they read the resolution at the third meeting.
Right.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Is, is it very clear, just as we plan this for the net, for another meeting, is it very clear exactly what Robert will need to submit, um, in addition to, or what he's already begun working on? It sounds like maybe.
Well, I haven't seen what's been submitted. I, I know there was a transmittal of information today at 2 o'clock, I don't know what's in that. I do know that two things that I specific, that we were looking for, we had an extensive conversation about blasting, and, um, we talked at great length about needing to refer it to Ray Jorkowski, um, if blasting was going to occur, so that hasn't been addressed to my knowledge at this point, in terms of what the decision is there. And we also are still looking for some idea, although we've received some things from the neighbors in terms of what they perceive to be the view from their property going forward, but I can't answer your question, Adelise, about what is or isn't missing, I'm sorry.
I think if I could just, generally, the reason we ask for things from applicants two weeks prior to the scheduled public hearing or continuation of the public hearing is so that we as members can review it and have our questions ready for the public hearing, which we clearly don't, we're not ready tonight, and perhaps even more important, so Jim can review it and look for different aspects that either need further explanation, further information, to help us along with that as well, and it takes at least two weeks for him ahead of a meeting, simply because of all the other, uh, tasks that he has to perform, so that's why we made that rule some time ago, that any new information applicants has to be provided to us, the planning board, two weeks ahead of the meeting, the scheduled meeting where they're going to present. So that we're actually, because right now, it's quite obvious, we're not in a position to ask questions about what's been just presented, because none of us have seen it, and that's why it's so important that that two weeks be respected.
Can I say something? I don't, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Tom, thank you.
Well, you, you just.
You've now muted yourself.
I'm sorry about that, sorry. All right, so first of all, um, I don't know if you heard what my wife said, that apologies for not getting the things in on time, I guess it was a miscommunication. So what we're hearing are three things, one is, we want to make sure that you have the renderings in time, um, from the, from the baron's yard. Secondly, we will get you engineering information on the blasting. Thirdly, we'll get you the results from the archaeological survey, and then fourth, we'll keep you posted on what's going on with the ZBA variance. I just want to make sure that we have everything that we need from you, so that we make sure we get it in time to you.
Um, from, from my perspective, I think you've covered the major ones that we've identified. Um, if, I can't guarantee there aren't others that will result from looking at the new information, but um, I think that does clarify what I perceive to be the major outstanding issues.
Okay, so what, so.
Jim, Jim, do you see anything else?
Sorry, it's muted, I'm just looking through my memo really quickly, um, we had talked about, um, I'll have to go back and check what the variances are, but I know we had talked about the, um, height and dimensions of the, of the garage slash studio needing to be provided, I think that was going to be addressed, uh, accessory residential structure, can exceed 20 feet in height, and I think there was some question about the size of the buildings, um, themselves, the house and the accessory dwelling, uh, but again, maybe that's in the variance, I'll have to go back and look again, um, to be sure. But, um, yeah. Thanks, my memo.
So, these materials will be needed by November 22nd, that's the two-week deadline before the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Gretchen, um, I might make one other request, as we have submitted a rendering, um, if anyone on the planning board would like it to be tweaked, changed, um, presented differently, I would, I would appreciate that feedback anytime soon.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, Jim, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment?
Take a look.
Don't see anyone turning on their screens or raising their hand, Melanie.
Okay. Um, then I think we're at the point of entertaining a motion to continue the public hearing, and that would be, again, to December 6th at 6:45 PM.
I'd like to move it, we do that.
Thank you, Edna, second, second, Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, the motion carries. We will see you all on December 6th, we'll
Thank you.
The information, um, that you've submitted this afternoon, and just remind you, if you have anything else, I think Gretchen gave you the date, want to repeat that, Gretchen?
November 22nd.
Okay, so anything we receive by the 22nd, we will happily review and be prepared on December 6th to get an in-depth discussion going. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Alderkill, Carl Duncanburg, 15 Ballenbecker Road, Major Subdivision. Um, Carl, are you here presenting tonight?
I'm here, Melody, I also have Jordan Baldina and Alan Rapleye.
Hello.
How's everybody doing?
So, uh, good, we're doing well, how are you?
Fine.
Good, Carl, I guess we would just ask. Good, Carl, I guess we would just ask you if you have any updates to bring before us. There was a lot of things sort of hanging out there, unanswered questions, so.
Yes, at least one major one that, of which I'm aware. Do you want me to give the overview, or should I hand it over to Jordan to talk about the driveway situation?
I, I, I guess I would like you to start with updates on.
All good, whatever you like, Carl.
Okay, sorry, Melody, what?
Well, I believe that we were awaiting information from you on a conservation organization. That might be receiver of easement, some other things like that, so maybe you want to start with that, and then we'll take up the next bits of conversation.
Sure, yes, we have had positive feedback from a couple of land trusts, sort of late in the game here. And we're going to be doing a site visit with at least one of them in the coming week or two. So I'll have more information on that as it arises.
But that, but, but we don't yet have an agreement, so we.
No, no, not resolved yet.
The ability to have a conservation subdivision is still in question.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that, that's the answer to that question, so then I think the other issues have to do with the, with the driveway, is that correct?
Yep, and we have a, some, just mildly modified plan from the one we presented last week, and I'll hand that off to Jordan.
So this is, let me, let me, let me be fair here, this is information that's different from last week, which we're just seeing tonight?
Nope, it's what we submitted last week.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be fair.
No problem. Yep, that's, looks like it, yeah.
This is the one day to the twenty eighth, this is the, the most recent, I believe.
In advance.
Yeah, as long as it's the most recent, that's the one.
Yep.
Uh, Jordan, you're up.
Okay, hello, everybody. So what we have done is simply moved the driveway over. Per agreement from the highway department, that we could have a second curb cut if needed. And made that a twelve foot width, with our understanding that that was the minimum acceptable width. That entirely steers clear of the adjacent property, so there's no more mystery island. Of what do you do for that one foot that's on the neighbor's property? We're achieving the minimum twelve feet entirely on Carl's property. We are presenting it as far to the south as we can to stay, to minimize disturbance, basically. And that's really it, of course, I can answer any questions about it, but that's the essence of what this is. We've moved driveway over, entrance over to not interfere with the adjacent property issues.
And that little sliver is gone?
It's still there, the issue regarding it, which was, we were presuming rights to it. We have relinquished and said, okay, that's not ours to say, so we're, we're steering, we're, we're just avoiding the little island. They could put shrubbery in it if it fit, I suppose, but it's not ours to say, it's the adjacent property owner's sliver.
Forgive me, Jordan, this is different from the prior submission or Jim, whoever.
Yes.
By the fact that you have moved the driveway to the south by a footer, so.
We, no, yep, so we've moved it to the north and we've expanded the width. Yeah, so what, what we did before was we simply added eight feet to the north of the existing driveway. And in so doing, we had a minimum drive, driveway width in total. But we were presuming in that instance that the little sliver, I'll call it, yeah, right there. That is not on the existing property, excuse me, is not on the existing driveway, and yet is on the adjacent property owner's property. We were presuming, oh, you know, that'll just get gravled over, no biggie. But the adjacent property owner said, hey, that's our sliver, what's the agreement there? So this proposal, simply in direct response to that, moves the minimum to the north. By which we can entirely avoid the adjacent property for our driveway needs.
And, and just to clarify, the minimum, I believe, according to code, is actually, for a common drive, is actually eight feet. But, which is why we were initially thinking that, but after having the wetlands delineated and seeing that, that we did have room. We figured we would go with twelve feet, which would bring it in line with the rest of the existing driveway, which I own. That's an existing twelve foot drive, so it will join up with that after that first seventy feet. And it will be consistent throughout in terms of width.
So that, that new seventy foot section is right on the property line?
That would be the idea, and, and just to give a little context, we're being put, we're being. Necessarily having to put an entrance to the north due to conditions being set by the adjacent property owner. We want to keep it as far to the south as possible to minimize impact, which is why we are showing it on the property line. If we were to, for example, be five feet from the property line, which we can, per, again, highway department, we can have our own curb cut. It's more of an impact in terms of grading, et cetera. So we're trying to minimize impact with everything we've proposed.
But it would also be pushing it further into the wetland buffer, is that right? Which is the blue line that we see above the driveway?
That's the wetland, actually, the buffer is the dash line to the south, yeah, that's the buffer. So we can fit it up until basically right almost at the wetland buffer. And get, you know, probably ten feet from the property boundary, excuse me, wetland boundary. But we, we want to stay as far from that as possible. By the way, the DEC has been onsite, has verbally validated. But we will be getting a, an official validation of Mike Nowicki's wetland flag. They understand that our driveway location is not being driven by factors of, we just want to get closer to the wetland. But rather, we want to get farther from it. We will need a wetland permit in all cases to work in the buffer. And they are, again, verbally onboard, meaning understanding that it's kind of no way around what we're doing. And we're trying to minimize proximity, maximize distance to the wetland, as much as we can, yeah.
Okay, and I, I, am I correct that you have identified an archaeology firm? Which was another part of this application that we were looking to.
Yes.
Okay, so, not.
Oh, sure, heart gen has been identified and made a proposal, yeah, we're just working on it out.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, we don't need to have the report right now, we were looking to confirm that. Jim, I believe you have some updates that you might want to offer as well.
Here, I'll try and go through them pretty quickly, they are detailed in my memo. Also, Phil, planning board members have seen them, and my memos are, are public. So, you know, one of the things that I had discussed at the last meeting was maybe, you know, there was some latitude here for us in terms of the conservation easement. In terms of who could hold it, maybe Carl and other property owners could hold the conservation easement, because I thought the law was silent on that. We have had a legal determination that that can't be done, that would be considered to be interpreting the law, which the planning board cannot do. So in effect, what has to happen in the town of Ryanbeck for a conservation subdivision to move forward, is that a conservation organization has to. Take on the, holding the conservation easement, the town is not going to accept conservation easements. As they could potentially do if a conservation easement can't be held by, or wouldn't be held by a conservation organization. So that was one.
And just, just, just to comment on that, Jim, you have confirmed that with the town, that is not Jim's opinion. That is something that we have had confirmed through the town.
Correct, and that was what I was going to say, that is, I have confirmed that with the town, that they, they have, they do not have an interest in taking a conservation easement. It's not just this project, it is conservation easements pretty much in general, I mean, there could always be an exception, but that's generally what we've been told. So that effectively means that a conservation organization has to hold that easement for conservation subdivisions, you know, to move forward in the town. Which we kind of thought was going to be the case. Melody, you covered the archaeological study, so I won't get into that one. You know, we will have a discussion about, let me see, I'm just looking through my notes really quickly. So I guess there are two more items, I guess I'll go to the next one, which is that, what is being proposed here is a partial conservation subdivision. It's not a full conservation subdivision. The code itself, section one twenty-five forty-three F four, does have specific recommendations and requirements for a partial conservation subdivision. One of those, and I'm bringing this up because it has been discussed in the past at meetings, is that the protected open space must actually be designed. For a partial conservation subdivision to allow for the preservation of buildable land and allow for subsequent extension of the conservation subdivision. There were some questions before about the fact that some of the conservation land was not contiguous. The code actually requires that for a conservation, conservation subdivision, the gaps do be left in between some of that land. To allow for the connect connectivity between what's being proposed now and what could potentially be proposed later. It's obviously Carl's not proposing that right now, he did provide a yield plan that shows the potential of what could be done on the site. But the conservation subdivision code does require that some gaps be left to provide for reasonable utilization for future access to the remainder of the land. For potential development. So I, I think that that is generally consistent with, with, you know, what has been proposed here in terms of, of the land setup and the yield plan. That Carl had shown us before. Moving on to the last item, and that is the driveway that we just talked about. I again, talked to the town of Ryanbeck and have confirmed that the town does not have any interest in taking ownership of a, a town road. For the purposes of, of the subdivision. Generally speaking, I don't think we would be looking for the town to take a road unless I think there was a significant rationale and reason for the town to do so. There have been discussions about what this road should be. I also conferred with the town planning board attorney about the note on the, the original subdivision map. And what that note is referring to when it talks about a proposed road. I read that note to state that that proposed road was actually referring to Buttonwood, that any connection over parcel A. Was actually referring to anything that happened on parcel A connecting to Buttonwood, when the Buttonwood was considered to be the quote unquote proposed road. I have confirmed with our planning board attorney, they agree with me on that comment, that they believe and, and understand that the way that is written. That that reference on that original subdivision map is that the proposed road is Buttonwood itself. Grant Lions will provide us with a, a letter essentially to that fact, to that, you know, stating their agreement with, with what I found. I summarized it in my notes, but they'll provide us with the legal kind of background on that, and their, their finding on that. So, you know, that was our interpretation, that's their interpretation, just wanted to put that out there for the planning board and the public to understand. Moving on a little further in terms of the driveway, our understanding based on the review of the conservation subdivision regulations, one twenty-five forty-three K. Is that the driveway or road connection from Buttonwood to what is being proposed here could be one of several options. In general, the code appears to recommend a method of access that is least impactful and preserve the unique nature of the natural surroundings. My belief is that a road, well, it doesn't matter, I put the notes in there, but it doesn't matter, because the town's not going to take the road, so we can stay away from that town road discussion. But I do believe the town road would, would actually result in more significant loss of woodlands and increased width, runoff, things like that. Immediately adjacent to the wetlands. And the planning board's been very consistent that they want to protect wetlands and minimize any development or impact with, you know, in proximity to the wetlands or in the wetland buffer. So effectively, just to summarize and finish up. The type of access that can be provided specifically for a conservation subdivision as it relates to widening and accessing Buttonwood Lane. According to one twenty-five forty-three K, it states that common driveway access for conservation subdivisions may be provided to serve up to six dwellings. It also states that private roads are encouraged in conservation subdivisions subject to New York State regulations. You know, I encourage everyone to take a look at that section, you know, kind of familiarize yourself with it. But I do believe that what is being proposed is generally consistent with the conservation subdivision requirements and guidelines. And I have confirmed the status of what we believe, you know, what we understand the town is and is not willing to do regarding conservation subdivision. Holdings of the easement and dedication of roads. So that's my quick summary of my, thank you, Melody.
You're very welcome, thank you for all the hard work you've put into this, this is a very complicated process we're going through. And I know you've done a lot of late work on this, Jim, talking to the town and talking to the planning board attorney, so, thank you. I, I'd like to open it up this time to members of the planning board who might have questions of Jim regarding what he's just presented.
I just have one question, my understanding from everything I've heard tonight is that. Without moving the driveway north at this point, there's going to be a lot of conflict, is that the clear, simple version of that?
Well, I, I certainly wouldn't want to speak on that, but I.
Well, not to you, Melody, I guess I, I propose that to.
Yeah.
The people submitting the application.
I haven't, I haven't opened it up yet to.
All right.
Public comment, and I would assume, I haven't looked yet, but I assume some of the interested neighbors be there. So maybe Sean, we can kick that down the road a little bit and let them comment. But I, I think your question is, is certainly well phrased and important to the dialogue.
Well, I think it's okay for the people submitting the application to comment, and then obviously the public can also comment.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Um, I would only say that the whole idea behind our, the latest iteration of our plan for the disentrance. Period of the driveway, not to mention the less impactful common drive as opposed to a town road, which we now know is impossible. Is meant to avoid conflict in any way possible, we're no longer suggesting, you know, that we would. Make any impact on our, our, my neighbor, the Benetti's property, and we would be doing this. So they do, by the way, for anyone who hasn't been here for the other hearings, they do have a right of way going back to the Buttonwood Lane subdivision. To access their property over my property, and of course, that will continue to be the case in perpetuity. So we figured this was the least, this was the most conflict averse way of handling this. Is to put an entire access for my subdivision on my property, put it all, you know, go to the expense of. Again, as minimally impactful as possible, but to go to the expense and the time of making sure we have our entire access on my property. So that, you know, there won't be any room for conflict or in the future.
Maybe conflict wasn't the best word, but disagreement.
Lack of, lack of consensus.
Lots of consensus, thank you, Melody, I need to turn to you when I have words.
Okay, so let me ask other planning board members, is there anything you'd like to raise at this point, given Jim's presentation?
Um, yes, I'm wondering if a land trust is not willing to take on the easement. Are there other sections of the zoning law that could amount to something like this, close to this? I'm thinking, for example, of multifamily housing, single family condominiums.
I'll, I'll kick that to Jim, I think he's most comfortable answering that, or maybe not comfortable, but.
Well, I, I was just going to say, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty simple, essentially, you know, as I stated, if, if, if Carl and anyone else proposing conservation subdivision. Can't find an organization willing to hold the easement, you can't do a conservation subdivision, which means the only other options on the property in the RC five. Are to do whatever else is permitted in the RC five, and there, there are other options. It depends on the site, it depends on access, it depends on frontage, so I'm not going to, you know, guess what Carl could do on his property. But, yeah, he'll, he, you know, anyone that, that can't do this under a conservation easement would have to look at another option if they wanted to do something. I guess it's the easiest way to put it.
Jim, I imagine that would be a conventional subdivision, we'd have to, of course, make modifications for lot size and frontage of, of all the things you just mentioned, correct?
If you're looking to put, yeah, the same number of residential units as you are, Carl, yes, it would, we'd be looking at a conventional, traditional subdivision.
Okay.
Come to that.
All right, that, Edna, does that answer your question?
Um, as much as Jim is willing to at this point, yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, anyone else from the planning board? I'm going to get to the public in just a minute, I see some hands raised, but I want to make sure that we've heard from planning board members who might have any questions.
Oh, this is Jim, I was just curious, Carl, did DC say anything about the permits you're going to need, permitting process? Anything you can explain regarding that with them, with the state?
I think I could answer that, but probably best I let Jordan, I was there and listening, but.
It's a joint, it's a standard joint permit form. The essence of it, really, the detail of it is engineering specific, what exactly we're doing and how we're mitigating impact. How much are we proposing to impact in the buffer, what does it specifically entail? Those things are engineering specs, but the, the pathway is under a joint permit.
Thanks, Jordan.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else from planning board members? All right, at this point, I will open it up to public comment, but I would like to remind the public that we like them to keep their comments three to four minutes. And if you've already expressed these comments in the past, if we have them in writing, I would ask you to just refer to them and let us know that you're reiterating your previous comments. Here's our format for public comment. So just ask you to try and help us along here. I know there's a lot of public sentiment around this, but we ask you to, you know, keep it succinct and keep it to the point. So thank you very much for indulging us. I don't know who's first, but I see Joe Ely's hand there.
Thank you very much. Could we go back to the previous map of the driveway, please? The driveway that we're looking at here is entirely within the Skylar acre subdivision where all of the lot owners paid a premium on their lots to not, you have a shared driveway. So this would be a very big change to the Skylar acre subdivision by having this kind of a shared driveway arrangement within the Skylar acre subdivision. And like I said, this entire parcel was within the Skylar acre subdivision that we're looking at all the way from Buttonwood Lane, all the way to the edge of the Duncanburg property. The other thing that I haven't seen in the plan here is where ten to fifteen recycling and trash containers are going to be located, where five new mailboxes are going to be located, where all of those services are going to be located to support these houses that are back in there on a private driveway where the waste disposal companies won't go back in there, the post office service won't go back in there, nobody will go back in there, and I haven't seen that degree of planning. The last piece is if you go off of the Benetti driveway and you go twelve feet north, what you're looking at here are two different lines. You're five to eight feet in elevation above the wetlands at that point, and there has to be room left for grade. So I think you're going to be squarely way off into the wetlands by putting that extra driveway there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Patrick.
Good evening. As you said, I'll try to keep my comments brief. One other update from my end, as you know, I'm working with the Benettis in their review of this project. We were recently
Could you, are you a consultant to the Benettis?
Oh, yes, my apologies. My name's Patrick Logan. I'm an attorney working with the Benettis in the review of this application. We were actually recently in touch with the applicant to try to reach an agreement regarding the shared use of a driveway. We sent out a formal letter to them on Friday. We understand that there's been a short turnaround time and we weren't necessarily expecting a response before now, but we're hoping to get a response and that we could move forward with some sort of negotiation to have shared use of the driveway because as we've all stated before, doing so would greatly alleviate the impacts to the wetlands on the site.
Thank you.
That being said, we once again ask that you keep the public hearing open while we try to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Well, I don't think there's any question about that, Patrick. So thank you for the update and thank you for the optimism about resolving some of those shared problems. Anyone else? I see anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Melody, I don't see any of their hands up. I don't see anyone else turning on their screens.
All right.
I don't see anything in the chat.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
No.
I had a I had a question in the chat, which actually should have been turned off. The chat was turned off. So there was a question asked to me about whether the memo clarifies the town is not willing to take ownership of the easement and how it affects conservation subdivision. I did know in the memo that that is the case and can confirm, I have talked with town representatives about it. So that is, that is the case. The town is not interested in taking ownership of the easement. Sorry, Melody, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we've offered ample opportunity for the public to comment. It seems like we have. So I think we're at a position where we're going, certainly going to continue the public hearing. The question in my mind is, do we continue this a month where are we really just jamming ourselves up and should be continuing this for two months?
May I, before you decide, can I say, can the applicant speak after the public?
Of course.
Okay, I just wanted to
I was just trying to phrase the position we're in for the benefit of my colleagues.
Got it. I just didn't want a decision to be made and we go, wait, we had something to say that might affect the decision. So carry on, sorry.
No, I'm just presenting that we're in a position now where we certainly are going to continue the public hearing. The question before us, after obviously Jordan wants to offer additional information is, do we do it in a month or do we do it in two months? So you know, we'll talk about how much information is still outstanding and I think come to a conclusion after you speak.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to mention, and I'm going to put this in the category of logic, just to think about it. So the driveway that we showed expanding off the Benettis because the original driveway was clearly put in where it was irrespective of property boundaries for convenience of not having to add more fill, et cetera. So that hung up this application in that that was a contested entry, became a contested entry in which there's a deal either not being presented or being presented. So first, it was you don't get to use that. Now it's please don't impact the wetlands. Maybe you want to use it. The only reason I say that is it, what it does is plays ping pong with this application and merely delays what we just avoided the issue by moving. What I'm hoping to do, what I'm proposing and hoping on behalf of the applicant that we can close the public hearing because it's, there's not a new issue around it, rather it's engineering and owner agreements will determine exactly where the driveway is. But in all cases, there's a way in. So I just present to the board, I don't think that there is something actually hanging in the public hearing category so much as the engineering and fine tuning.
Jordan, actually, there is. We don't, until we know that there's a conservation group willing to take the easement, we don't know if a conservation easement is even going to be permitted.
Is that
And we don't, and we and we don't have an archaeology report.
Okay, this is just a clarification as to process then. So public hearing should stay open until archaeological report is complete and conservation easement holder is in place?
Until the entire application is complete.
Because that's the application before us. The application before us has to do with the entrance, but it also has to do with the conservation subdivision. So we can't close the public hearing on this. It's not just relegated to the driveway.
No, I'm not suggesting it is. I did not know that everything to be determined is the basis for holding a public hearing open. I thought there was times where you close it while gathering additional information. So that's all.
Absolutely not.
To Michael's point, I would just like to chime in and say that it is very much my hope that I will have, I don't know what they call it in the land trust world, but I would very much hope that we will have an answer from them, whether that's a letter of intent in the affirmative or hey, you're out of luck and move on by the beginning of December. From our end, I don't see any reason to wait till January, but
I, I'm not sure. I can't speak fully. Maybe Jim can chime in. I'm not sure the letter of intent is sufficient for us to close the public hearing and consider this a done deal.
You're right. We typically, you know, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed before we close the public hearing, and that's for everything. I mean, it's for the archaeological study, it's for everything. I'd still consider where we are because we are discussing, you know, whether or not we can do a conservation subdivision and even discussing the alignment of the driveway that we're actually still officially in steps one through four, which is everything from, you know, and all the information's been submitted, Jordan and Carl, don't get me wrong. I know you've submitted it all, but we're still on the point of confirming that, you know, the delineation of open space lands works, location of the house sites are going to work, that's dependent upon the archaeological study, that the alignments of streets, trails and anything else are going to work as is, and then, you know, that the lot lines are going to be confirmed. So in my opinion, we're still, we're still in that first phase. We're well into it and we've done a lot of additional work. I don't deny that. But I think we still have a lot of steps. We have to clear a lot of steps before we're going to get close. And like I said, we typically have everything wrapped up, all questions answered before we close the public hearing, as you saw tonight. You know, last questions were asked, everything was confirmed, and then we move forward with an approval resolution.
Understood. I wasn't specifically asking for the sake of closing or not the public hearing at any particular meeting, just that I thought I might have news for the planning board by the first meeting in December, not rather than the first meeting in January. That's all.
I guess
irrelevance of the public.
Go ahead, Melody.
Carl, my, my personal opinion is that there's still a lot of information to come in. And, you know, with respect to my colleagues on the planning board, we're getting jammed up here. And I don't want to continue to discuss things that we can't move on. And so my personal opinion is we'd be best kicking this to January. That's my personal opinion. I'm open to other people chiming in, but I believe there's still a lot of dialogue that needs to take place between the neighbors, between other outside parties, between you engaging an archaeology firm. We're a bit away. So my personal opinion is I'd like to give us some room, but I'm open to other people chiming in.
Could I just ask then, what are the, if Jim could summarize, or if it's better to put this in an email and not take up any more of your time tonight, just what you will be looking for by the next meeting, whenever that is, other than archaeology, land trust. We presented our driveway plan. Anything else?
Well, I would just chime in and say you've obviously had an offer tonight to have a conversation with a neighbor. And I would hope that, you know, you would be able to give us information about how that could be resolved.
Yeah, I've been attempting to do that for the last thirty days since our last meeting and have pretty much determined that we can't come to an acceptable resolution, which is why we're presenting this plan. Late Friday night, received a list of their terms and they're untenable for us.
Okay, I don't, we don't need to get into that. That's between you. And that kind of goes to my point that there's still a conversation that needs to take place.
Okay, I understand, but it's just with that consideration that we're presenting this plan tonight. That's all.
And that goes to my point of, I think we're still a couple of months out.
Yeah, Carl.
I also want to point out there's a two week deadline for additional materials as well, so.
Thank you, Gretchen. Always a good reminder.
Oh, gotcha. Meaning we need two weeks lead time, have everything done before the meeting day. Thank you.
Right, it would have to be in two weeks before that for the planning board to be able to review it. So it kind of cuts your, your time down.
Okay, that's compelling.
Did I see any other planning board members wishing to comment?
I confer, Melody, with your perspective, I do think to give yourselves the maximum amount of time to make as complete a submission and application as you possibly can is good for you and good for the board.
Yeah, Carl, this is Jim. I mean, you know, and Jordan, I think that's really what we're looking for is, is we kind of need you, you know, to get to a point of this is what we want to do. There's still some, you know, like Melody said, discussions of maybe the driveway, they go so that way. I think we need to say this, this is your final, this is what we're going to do, this is what we want to do. We've got all the studies, we've got all the reports, the planning board members have been able to review everything. You know, essentially their questions have all been answered. You know, we'll hold another, you know, public hearing or two, whatever it takes. And then be able to, you know, kind of discuss moving this forward. I think there's just still a couple of pieces and a little bit of unknown that we just need to get to that final point.
Understood.
Yeah, so it's, it's the Hartgen report, presuming we go with Hartgen, it's the conservation easement. That's, that's what remains besides specific engineering of the driveway entrance, subject to something unexpected happening with the driveway. That's
I would also put in the driveway discussions with the neighbors, which I believe was offered from both sides tonight, from my perspective. Does that summarize it? I mean, still the same three, right?
Yeah, as long as there's nothing else from your, from the planning board's perspective.
Jim can correct me, but I thought we thought the major issues were the driveway, conservation easement and the archaeology. Does that, Jim?
I generally, I think so. I mean, unless we're looking at some type of change to your, you know, agreement of the driveway usage, you know, we need that. If there is anything in terms of, you know, that agreement remaining in perpetuity, I don't imagine it's going to change since you're just adding on your property. But it's such, yeah, all the relevant, you know, documentation, engineering, DEC permit, you know, whatever needs to be provided.
Okay. Any other comments? Any planning board comments? Any public comments?
I have one additional thought, Melody, sorry. Just Jordan and Carl, get highway department's approval on that driveway. I can't remember if the most recent letter was for this iteration or a different one, but a letter from Bob.
It covers it. What's that? Bob's covers it. He said you can do an entirely separate curb cut further to the north or closer or merge the driveways. He understands the situation. It's okay to do it either way, according to
Okay, so that, yeah, so that, that discussion did include essentially what's been shown. Okay.
But Bob's comments don't take into consideration any future DEC comments. Is that right?
He's aware of the, yeah, he's not speaking to the DEC. He's
Exactly.
You're right. Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do a quick public comment?
Well, absolutely.
Or is it, or is it too late?
It's never, it's never too late, Brian. Go ahead.
Assuming all the other things that we talked about are worked out, is there going to be more talk later on about the actual placement of the lots and the placement of the driveway once it's upon the Dunkerburgers lot proper? Or is that all of that is kind of unchangeable going forward?
We have an application before us that is open to public comment and consideration. I don't think anything's been decided at this point. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, not, nothing, certainly nothing's been decided at this point by the planning board. Certainly it's open for discussion, but you know, this, this project has been under review in its entirety, you know, with the pieces we have since, you know, the beginning or since, you know, new information was provided. So planning board, you know, has commented on it as it's kind of come in, but certainly there's nothing to say we can't later on. I actually I'm going to specifically ask, I think, the planning board to kind of run through the four steps at a future meeting and just kind of say, okay, to each one of those four steps. We did it sort of informally, but I want to do it formally as we move forward and talk about them one by one.
Is that okay? Another meeting, correct?
Yes, another meeting, not tonight.
Oh, no, Kathy, we're going to go on for another
No, I just, I just want to be sure. I understand. You know, could I just ask one last question, not to make a deal out of this, but the Skylar Acres landowners underlying agreements do or do not impact the overall decision of the planning board, the issue that, forgive me, who brought it up? Joe brought up? Does, does that ever enter into discussions at the planning board level or not?
Well, it does, and it's one of the questions we've kicked to our planning board attorney.
Thank you.
Looking carefully at all of the deeds and all of the approvals. So we are mindful of that question and we are looking for final clarification on those issues. So we understand that's a question.
Thank you, Melody.
Just to be clear. Sorry, go ahead, Melody.
No, finish up.
I was just saying, just to be clear, and I did put this in my memo for tonight, we did confirm once again, you know, talking with, with the town planning board attorney, for the record, that the planning board and the town of Ryanbeck do not have the authority to regulate, implement or require terms found within deed restrictions. We can look at them, we can discuss them, but it is nothing that we can enforce.
Thank you.
That's, that's only enforceable between property owners.
Thank you.
And from everything we've looked at, it appears that everything related to this is in the deed restrictions. Nothing related to planning board approval. So you know, we're looking to solidify that so that we can be very clear about it, but we do understand the question and we're moving forward on that. Thank you, Brian, to your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
And Brian's, okay. Anyone else? I think we are feeling that we are at a motion of continuing the public hearing to the January third meeting. Is that? Pardon me? continuing the public hearing to the January third meeting. Is that, pardon me?
That might have been my echo or Siri or something. Sorry, everybody.
It might have been a sigh like, no, please, but.
Promise. It was digital, wasn't it?
I I am recommending that we continue the public hearing until January third. If anyone disagrees with me, um, please speak up, but I do believe there's still a lot of information that needs to come up, and I don't think we need to unnecessarily jam ourselves up.
So moved.
Second, Kathy, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I know this is a complicated application. I really appreciate everyone's involvement in moving it forward positively.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next up, last, I believe, for the last agenda item, uh, Rockledge. Four ninety-two Ackert Hook Road condo units. Um, the, we have a request from the applicant to continue the public hearing to January third. My goodness, twenty twenty-two. So, um.
Um, Melody, may I just interrupt you to tell you that I am recused from this and so I'm not going to be participating?
Thank you, Edna. I think you've been recused from the very beginning.
I have, thank you.
Um, so, um, I don't believe there's anyone here from Rockledge to make any comment or any presentations. But since this is a public hearing, I will open it to the public for comment. And we can take up the continuation. Um, so is there anyone here?
Like, uh, it's like Linda. Turn on your screen.
Yeah, we were just, um, yes, um, yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Linda.
Wait, we have, um, Linda Kagan and we have Kara Keywell. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so who's going first?
Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to go first. Um, so, um, for some reason, you're seeing Cara, not me, but.
No, I see you.
Okay, maybe it's just the, the view, the view option I have in front of me. Um, so, uh, I just want to thank the board for giving me an opportunity to speak. Um, as all of you must know by now, um, I was part of a group of, uh, neighbors who put together a petition and got about five hundred signatures of Ryanbeck residents who are both concerned and opposed to the current Rockledge proposal. Um, and, uh, given the significant, um, amount of people who want to be heard and 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 speak to this issue, um, I I would request that the planning board provide a dedicated meeting for it so that, um, people do have an opportunity. It would be great to have it in person. Um, but if it's, if it can't be, um, then, then certainly a dedicated, um, virtual, like we're having tonight, um, opportunity would be very, very useful.
Thank you. I thank you, Linda. I mean, we are, um, as an entity of town government, we are not in a position to decide which meetings we have virtual and which in person. Right now, the town is not allowing in-person meetings. So I I take your point and I can speak for myself and many other planning board members. We like in-person meetings as much as you do. Um, they allow for a lot more interaction and, you know, FaceTime, but at this point, I can't speak to that. And I'll take it up with other members of the board and Jim and others to discuss whether or not we can do a you know, dedicated meeting to this. So thanks for bringing it up. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Kara?
All right, but I, no, I didn't have, really have any other firm, other comments, other than, I guess, just to agree what the next date is. I think it's been established, but I don't think it's been mentioned yet tonight.
Um, well, at this point, um, we would be continuing it, I think, at the request of the applicant to January third. Um, that's, uh, as I said, at their request, they're still finalizing all the information we've requested from them. Um, we've received petition, we've looked at it, we've circulated to members of the planning board. I know you spread it widely into many people, so it's there for people to read and digest. And we're, um, obviously interested in reviewing that. So, um, unless there are other people here, Jim, is there anything you want to say?
Um, not at this time. I mean, the only new note that I put in my memo for this month was just, you know, documenting the fact that we have received a lot of public comment on this, uh, proposal over the years, uh, and then specifically mentioning that we did get a petition from the Ryan Beck Coalition, um, and just noting because it did go beyond the planning board, that I want to make sure planning board members were aware that um, it got much wider distribution than just, you know, a letter to the planning board, which is, um, typically, I guess, if I like for a better word, typically what we get, you know, letters that come to planning board. So um, it's, uh, that was really my only new comment at this point in time. Um, and just confirm that, yeah, they did request the continuation to January third by letter, the applicant requested by letter.
Correct. Any, uh, comments or questions from planning board members? Oh, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Rockledge until January third at six forty-five, correct, Gretchen?
Six fifteen.
Oh, six, oh, sorry, I'm on the old time. Thank you for correcting that, six fifteen.
So moved.
Move Kathy second.
Second, Joe.
Second, Joe. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, folks. Um.
There was the one abstention, Melody, with Edna.
Edna, I'm sorry, because Edna's recused, so, um, well, she, she actually abstained, that's a whole different question, but anyway. Um, I get the point. So, um, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Kathy, second?
Sean.
Sean.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you, planning board members. This is a lot of stuff to digest. There's a lot of things going on. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the public's time. I appreciate everybody weighing on what's going on. So thanks very much. Have a good couple of weeks before I see you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Cheers.